Good evening, everyone. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, March 30, 2023, at 6:13 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Estown Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. To our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you for joining us. I want to give a special welcome to two former trustees. Lori Moya and Cheryl Bradley are here with us today. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your service. We're trying to fill your shoes up here. So we will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Boswell, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Sabata to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. All right, Secretary Boswell, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the pledge to the Texas flag?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Juro lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la república que representa, una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. De honro bandera de Texas, te juro lealtad Texas, un estado bajo Dios, uno e indivisible.
Thank you. We now move to public testimony for action item on today's agenda. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio record their remarks. Tonight, we have five people signed up to speak in person, and we have nine who left a recorded message. We will now move to in-person testimony, and in order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period at this meeting, each speaker will be allotted one minute. No substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted, and callers who signed up to speak in person are welcome to come to the microphone when their name is called. As you come to the microphone, there is a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time, and when the buzzer sounds, please make a final thought in one sentence. Again, we ask that you, that whether you come to give a complaint or praise that you reference the staff member by position or by abbreviated last name, we ask that all member, audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for others at all times. So we have, we have five in person. The first speaker is Sarah McKenna. She'll be followed by Ms. Helen Miller, then, I'm sorry. Oh, it's going to be McKenna. Addison McKenna, Helen Miller, then Michelle Bradley, then Ken Zerifus, and then Steve Swanson. Okay, so Addison.
My name is Addison McKenna. I use the them pronouns. I'm a junior at Lhasa High School. Imagine you're going to purchase a home, but the house has recently gone through a fire. Would you want to purchase the home as it is, or would you want to purchase it when it was starting to be reframed and rebuilt so that you can kind of better envision its full potential? For me, I would prefer the latter, and I think that related to the superintendent and search candidates would want the same thing. They would want to come into a district that is working towards improvement and stability. The students and staff need and deserve that stability and consistency in order to achieve success. We need the right people in the right positions to start rectifying the past issues first, and I'm speaking this evening in support of slowing down the superintendent search process and extending the interim superintendent's contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Next, we have Ms. Helen Miller.
President Singh, trust of the trustees, I'm here tonight because I have, really have concerns about how the process did it ever get started. That's my, you know, and then I want to know, we have an interim superintendent that does not have any academic skills, so, and with the challenging issues that are here in AISD right now, with the special education backlog, African-American students not reading on grade level, teacher-staff shortages. These challenges need an experienced leader who has not only has the ed and vocational background, but experience to come up with solutions to these challenges, and the current intern has neither, and that's my thought. And I want to say this, whichever way the Board, trustees vote, I'm holding everyone accountable for the success of the Black children learning how to read. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next, we have Ms. Cheryl, Cheryl Bradley.
Good evening. I was told not to sneeze because that'd be my one minute. So, real quickly, I can't say that I'm in agreement with what it is that you want to do, but I understand why you want to do it. So I am going to say this, if you're going to extend the interim superintendent's contract, make sure you support him. Make sure that he has access to talent, and I'm not saying that he's, he's not talented because he is. We worked with him on the CBLC. He is very talented, but there are some things that he is lacking because he does not have that experience. So you have to ensure, because it's not your life, it's his, it's not your career, it's his, and it's our children's welfare. So you have to ensure that you are setting him up for success, not failure, and not at the expense of our children. Please hear me on that.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Next, we have Ken Zerifus.
Good evening, Board. My name is Ken Zerifus, President of Education Austin, the Employees Union for AISD. When I taught, I used to have the best lesson plans built on Sunday nights. I had it, and I was ready to go on Monday. I can't tell you the number of times that I had to change my lesson plan when I realized that the needs of the kids were different than what I anticipated on that weekend, and that's exactly what we're seeing here, and I applaud you for it. Your focus is on the success of our district and not the pride of your prior position or your lesson plan. With a legislative session, staffing issues, special ed concerns, overworked and underpaid employees, we have plenty to deal with right now. The search can wait. Interim Superintendent Segura has brought stability, calm, and a systematic thinking that kids, workers, and this community deserve. I've been in and around this district for 25 years. I've seen four superintendents, five interim superintendents. I've seen a thing or two, and this is the right decision right now. On behalf of Education Austin, thank you, Interim Superintendent Segura, for your compassion and thoughtful leadership, and thank you, Board, for your bold decision-making that recognizes the needs of students, workers, and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Swanson.
Good evening. I too am here to support the kids. I hope and trust that over the last year and maybe the last 10 years, that the information we've shared with you regarding governing and responsibilities of superintendents has been used. Tonight, I'm bringing information I trust you've already seen and hope that you're using it, but it speaks to experience. The standards required for a superintendent certificate, the Educator's Code of Ethics, AISD policy BJA, local and legal, and the policy BQ, local and legal, all point to the responsibilities you have in policy and law for the experience required in a superintendent, and I look forward to someday seeing that experience come alive and lived. Thank you. Where do I give, who do I give this to?
I can give it to Ms., oh, to Dr. Rich. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. So we will now play the recorded messages for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
This is Roxanne Evans, a longtime supporter of AISD and Chair of the East Austin Coalition for Quality Education, calling regarding the superintendent search item tonight. I don't recall a noneducator ever being a long-term interim or permanent superintendent in AISD. At a time when regular education is in crisis, especially the performance of Black students, and special education is in crisis and under an investigation, any thoughts of putting a noneducator in the superintendent seat is particularly disturbing if this is where things are headed. I applaud the Board wanting to seek more community input, but question the 15-month timeframe and delay in the search. I fear that delay signals board indecision and could make it difficult to get the experienced, competent, and visionary superintendent Austin deserves. If there is a pause, please consider a much shorter timeframe for choosing our permanent superintendent. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sarah Levithan-Daniels, and I am the mother of two very proud Galette Gecko's. I'm calling to voice my enthusiastic support of the Board of Trustees' decision to extend the interim superintendent role for Matias Segura through the end of the 2023-2024 school year. Mr. Segura has been doing a tremendous job for the district, and I believe he has the leadership, the drive, the heart we will need at AISD as we navigate through choppy waters. Consistency of leadership will mean a lot in the next year, and we are so lucky that we have Mr. Segura to lead us. I would also like to express my hopes that Mr. Segura be considered at the end of his extended interim superintendent term for the permanent position, assuming that he wants to be considered for it. We deserve a leader who truly understands the unique challenges, the history, and the strengths our district has. We need a leader whose energy and drive benefit our students, teachers, administrator staff, and parents who want this district to succeed. I believe Mr. Segura is the perfect person for that leadership position. Thank you so much for your hard work and for your consideration.
I'm calling to express concern about the hiring process for the superintendent for AISD. I'm concerned about any significant delay in hiring an educator to lead the district. I think it is critical that an educator at the top be able to evaluate the current leadership, which is largely the same leadership that has been problematic in many areas with overly focused administration of schools, has remained in place, and we also have, you know, clear indicators that schools are in crisis, that special education is in crisis and remains so. We need an educator at the top of the district who is able to evaluate both the leadership and the programming. The number-one job for the district is to educate students in the classroom and ensure that in the classroom they are receiving meaningful, inclusive educational programs that are bilingual, bicultural, and teach to all of their abilities and help them problem-solve and learn, and we really need an educator to value that. I believe that we can hire someone and then have short contracts and short benchmarks to determine their, their fit, but the longer we make this progress...
My name is DiNardo Vargas, a former parent and employee of AISD. As a supporter of the district, I am calling to express my support to maintain Mr. Segura as the interim superintendent, the action item on the agenda. In times of uncertainty, it is in the best interest of the district to have a leader who knows firsthand all the challenges that the district is facing. We are all aware of the multiple challenges that AISD is facing. Now is the time to reinforce, enhance the organization's stability, relationships, trust, and resiliency for the future success of all students, their families, educators, and community partners, and one way to do that is to maintain Mr. Segura and create an action plan that reconnects with former families and students who have left the district. Finally, I would like to share that I personally have worked with Mr. Segura in times of a crisis. I found him to be a leader who is willing to zoom in and zoom out to get a clearer picture of the reality of the issues impacting the district and to find the best solution for the students, families, and educators. He also values the importance of staying close to all AISD learning communities and partners. He also has the ability to communicate with clarity, honesty, and instill a...
Hello. My name is Lisa Fletus. I'm the parent to two kids, one of whom attends AISD. I'm also the co-chair for the Special Education Advisory Committee. In light of the school board's decision to extend Mr. Segura's agreement as interim superintendent, it's imperative the school board and administration budget for and create a neutral special education ombudsman's office that has authority over the Special Education Department and campuses to ensure the civil rights of students with disabilities are followed. One reason for Mr. Segura staying on is for continuity in a plan he has started to reform special education. As this process will take years or possibly decades, it's necessary and appropriate that resources be designated to help students and families until the district's professed goals catch up with their actual practices. This is an action that can be taken immediately to support the current and future superintendent. Thank you.
My name is Valerie Turios. I'm a parent, and I was a member of the Long Range Planning Committee and the Bond Steering Committee. I'm calling in regards to Agenda Item 4.1, the superintendent search. I support delaying the superintendent search. The district needs stability right now. Transitioning to a new permanent superintendent at this time will be disruptive to the initiatives currently in progress. I believe that Matias Segura is the best person to address the many urgent matters facing AISD. I've been impressed by Mr. Segura's effectiveness in his role as interim superintendent. I appreciate his transparency and communication style, and I've seen how he works with other district staff in the community. I believe that he is the leader we need right now. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Board of Trustees and interim superintendent Segura. My name is Megan Bosques, and I am a Becker P.E. teacher, Austin Ed Fund Ambassador, and Education Austin member. I'm calling to speak on Agenda Item 5.1. Last week, I commended the intentionality and effort in creating the superintendent profile. This week, I am calling in support of the slowing down of the search for our district's new superintendent. You'll have done the work in pinpointing what we need in AISD. Now we need the time to make sure the right person is selected. I couldn't be more proud that someone who is a child of a teacher and product of this district might stay at the dais for the next coming year. Matias Segura has lived with so much compassion and vulnerability, and I look forward to more time under his leadership. I'm hopeful that he will continue to seek feedback from our AISD community and all our district stakeholders, that he will use that feedback for the betterment of our district. I am hopeful that Matias Segura is a leader that, when faced with new information, isn't afraid to make a hard decision. Thank you so much, trustees and interim, for all your hard work this year. Y'all are greatly appreciated.
This is Eric Rommels, and I just wanted to call in to say thank you to the school board for taking the tight meeting to consider slowing down the process so that we can ensure that it is open as possible, but also that we get the best choice and go through a thorough vetting of whoever it may be. I also want to take a moment to just recognize that we are lucky to have an interim superintendent that is doing a good job, that allows us to consider extending him. Without him, this would also not be possible, so thank you to the board, thank you to him, and I hope y'all end up going ahead and passing to extend him and take more time to choose the next superintendent. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Nikki Schubert. I'm the parent of a second grader in Austin AISD. I am calling about Item 5.1. I wanted to affirm the trustee's decision to bring this action item today. It is important to look at the work you are doing even while it is in progress, and I think it's wonderful that you guys are taking the time to do that during the voting meeting. I would like to affirm the work that our interim superintendent has been doing, and because of that, I would support the idea of taking a longer window of time to identify just the right person for Austin AISD. Thanks for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. This concludes public testimony. I do want to apologize to Addison McKenna for referring to them with the wrong pronoun, and also wanted to praise, praise them for the amazing ASL sign language. You did a great job. All right. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications on the testimony we heard? Okay. All right. As a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the Board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. Tonight's special meeting is to discuss the possibility of slowing down the superintendent search. Tonight will be an opportunity for trustees to discuss these options and reflect on the feedback we have heard since starting the search. We heard clearly that the district needs stability and a clear understanding for what makes this community and our students so great, and we want to focus on improving our current systems to meet students' needs and give time for those systems to work. We are at a critical time in this district, and this Board wants to ensure we are doing what is necessary to address early literacy for historically marginalized students, special education, staff morale, and lifting up our most struggling schools. Before we move to publicly discuss this item, the Board will move into executive session to receive legal counsel regarding potential changes to a superintendent search, a contract, and evaluative needs of an interim superintendent. When we return, we will ask trustees to share their feedback on this potential change and welcome any possible motions for tonight's action item if needed. So thank you very much, and we will now recess the open meeting at 6:34 PM and move into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074, and we will return to the open meeting later to discuss and take any potential actions needed. All right. We now reconvene the open meeting at 7:30 PM. We move, we're moving on to number five, potential action items, consider changes to the interim superintendent agreement. Thank you so much to our community for watching at home. Tonight, our Board was able to receive legal counsel regarding the superintendent search and potential delays and discuss considerations for a contract and evaluative needs for working with our interim superintendent. We also discussed our current legal agreement with GR Recruiting, which is our search firm, as part of the superintendent search. Board, tonight, we have one item for potential action, to consider any changes needed to the interim superintendent agreement. And before I ask for action, I want to ensure we also provide the public an update on the search partner. The district would continue to work with our superintendent search consultant, GR Recruiting, who was able to hold over 50 student, staff, and community meetings and work with the district on developing a superintendent profile. This work to date would be maintained, and we would supplement it as needed next year. We are thankful to the flexibility of GR Recruiting with their support of our long-term search and ensuring we are being good stewards of the funds entrusted to us for this search. If we don't have any other comment, do any trustees have comments just on GR Recruiting and the search process so far? Okay. If we don't have any other...
I just want to say...
Oh, yes.
I just want to share my thanks and I hope and believe my colleagues' thanks just for everyone who has engaged with us in this process so far. We know a lot of people have put a lot of time and effort into sharing their thoughts through surveys and meetings and with us directly, and really appreciate that input. That really helps all of us lead to a better decision for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So if we don't have any other comments, we can entertain a motion under Item 5.1, Consider Changes to the Interim Superintendent Agreement. Do we have a motion?
Yes, President Singh. I move to authorize the Board officers and legal counsel to extend the interim superintendent's contract with Matias Segura.
I second. All right. So we have a motion by Vice President Foster and a second by Trustee Sabata. Trustees, is there any discussion on this item? Trustee Kaufman.
Thank you, President Singh. So this consideration of extending the contract term for interim superintendent Matias Segura to extend till June 30, 2024, is not something that I had expected that we would be discussing soon, and certainly not something that I had expected initially to be supporting. But I have moved, through listening to our community, through listening to my colleagues on this Board and others who I've discussed this with, I have moved to be a very strong yes in favor of continuing our work with interim superintendent Segura. I think the two biggest concerns that I would have had previously were the fact that he does not have an educator background, nor does he have a superintendent certification, and that we made some promises and commitments on this Board to what this search would look like and how we would conduct this, but I've had my questions on both of those issues answered. What we need right now in our district is, we need education. We don't necessarily need an educator, and what we've seen that our district is most in need of right now are to strengthen the systems that we have for running this district. We need to strengthen our systems for identifying in a timely fashion according to the law our students for special education. We need systems for implementing practices that are going to take our students instructionally where they need to go. We need systems to ensure that we are putting in place plans to attract and retain our high-quality talent in this district in all positions, and we need systems for implementing anything that we're trying to do. And so what I do believe strongly what we need right now is a systems person, and that's something that Mr. Segura answers. Secondly, the promises that we made, you know, I very much came into this Board promising that this search would be an open search and that we would find the best possible candidate for this job. That is still our promise, like, that is still my promise if we are to vote for this. I would still promise that we will have an open search for the permanent position and that we will continue to listen to our community when we make that decision in the future. So if we were to make this decision tonight, we, I would not be voting to make Mr. Segura the permanent superintendent. I would be voting to make him an extension of his interim status until following year. And why would that be important? That would be important because of the importance of maintaining the stability of what we have getting started right now and to get those systems in place. And so in the words of our student Addison, who spoke at the start of our meeting, that we have to kind of paint this house and get this house in better order before we try to sell it to another superintendent so that we can get our best value from making that selection later. And in the words of Mr. Zerifus, that we also need to be humble enough to adjust our plans when we see that what our community most needs is this. So I have heard from a handful of voices throughout this process about the need to have an educator. I have heard from a handful of, I have heard from many, actually, our survey said that lots of people feel we need an educator, but that was offset by the number of people who said that we really need to continue with Mr. Segura. So there's a lot of reasons that I have come about 180 degrees on this and feel very strongly that our best choice right now would be to continue with the progress that we're starting to make and get our house in order so that a year from now, we can be making the very best possible decision for who our permanent superintendent would be.
Thank you, Trustee Kaufman. Any other trustees? Vice President Foster.
Oh, please.
I want to, I guess, lift up and acknowledge one of the realities that we've lived with for a long, long time, which is the, the quality of student experience and even more pointedly, the academic outcomes for our African-American students. One of the points of concern that has been consistently raised, even as many folk have come forward to just say that, that slowing down the search is the right thing to do, extending the interim is the right thing to do, others have been steadfast in lifting up the fact that we are failing too many of our children and failing too many of our African-American children in specific, and I really want to thank and honor and acknowledge those folks, folks like Trustee Bradley who came out tonight, former trustee, folks like Ms. Helen Miller, who is a lifetime advocate for our students, folks in the Black Leaders Collective. These are all folks who have reached out in different ways to share their concerns. The dialogues and the conversations have been foregrounded by listening, but they were also dialogues, and so I consider a... And so, I consider us accountable with whatever decision we make. I put forward the motion, so I think where I am is clear to folk, but that is absolutely in consideration and an understanding that I personally am accountable, as we all are accountable to our students African-American, to all of our students, including our African-American students.
Thank you, Vice President Foster. Trustee Boswell.
So, I feel like when we approved our profile Saturday, we reached a tipping point, a decision point, and kind of a fork in the road. And that profile was intended to become a job listing that we were going to put out into the world in partnership with GR Recruiting, who is the firm that has been helping us with this work. And we were going to start asking people who have known this job was open now for quite a long time, and who we hope have been eagerly watching and had an interest in applying to our district. We were going to put that job listing out there, and people were going to start spending their time, their energy, their emotion, putting those applications in. And I feel like this decision, this conversation, needs to happen before we can do that. Putting that profile out there would not, if we were going to have this discussion later, I think would not be fair to our district, to our applicants, to our search firm, who was using their capital to get ready to go out there and seek people, or to our community. So, I really appreciate the chance to pause and have this conversation at this fork in the road. I also want to say I've really heard from people talking about the importance of the educational mission of our district. We all believe strongly that is why we're here. That is what this work is about. This is a school district full of schools and tens of thousands of students, each and every one we have a very strong obligation to. And one thing that I have seen is a real respect for expertise and understanding that there are different kinds of expertise. And we have thousands of gifted, talented, passionate educators who know us well and know their craft well, who I know that we'll be leaning on as a board, and any, you know, anyone who leads our district needs to lean on that expertise. So, I don't want it to be lost, that expertise comes, you know, from many places, including in each and every classroom in our district. So, thank you for that. And just appreciate the chance to kind of pause and realize that we rest on a very strong foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Boswell. Any other comments? Trustee Hunter.
Thank you. I want to thank the community also for your emails and the call-ins, people who showed up coming here in 5 o'clock traffic to let us know what they feel and what they're concerned about. Whatever the outcome of the vote this evening, I want to assure the public that, for myself, as an educator, as a parent of a student receiving special education services, as someone who is part of a community that has been marginalized, that the top priority is that all student outcomes reach a level of excellence. And I'm not speaking for the board, but I know these people well enough to believe that that is in their heart, and that is what they come here to do and give their time and sweat and tears to do also. I do want to add something of our community, that those who have engaged continue to do that, as we continue doing what we're doing in our district for all kiddos, those who have disengaged to reengage, because we cannot do it alone, the district cannot do it alone, teachers cannot do it alone, we have to forge a solid partnership. And finally, I would just like to ask that people continue to talk to us. Whatever is done here tonight, don't disengage. Don't not tell us what you think. It is important. We have to know what is happening in our community. And I just, again, want to thank everyone for filling out a survey, for, you know, getting between those times. I heard some teachers calling in, I appreciate that, while they're at work. And so, again, just thank the community and be assured that the priority of all marginalized community is that we get those outcomes to excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hunter. Any other? Trustee Lugo.
So, gosh, I couldn't say it better than Trustee Kaufman. I would not have thought that we would be discussing this particular topic, but I appreciate the thoughtfulness. And would I see this go around that, and I know I'm part of the board, but if I were on the other side, some of the key differences for me would be, this isn't a rushed process that takes place over five months, where, you know, we could present X number of meetings or X number of survey responses. We have committed to a more open and transparent search process, which hasn't been done since four Gionne. And I know that for some folks who, and this is probably just a smaller contingent, but for folks who are concerned about having an interim superintendent who does not have an academic background, we can see where that got us these last several years. These things aren't necessarily correlated, right? You can have an academic background and still struggle to manage and lead an organization of this size. You can not come to the table with an academic background, but be able to apply a systems thinking and be able to think about strategic operational improvements, which may sound really boring, but that's actually how you make projects and initiatives and change happen. So, I guess, all of that to say, I feel like the process, while it may feel a little unorthodoxed or a little surprising to folks, I think it's actually really in line with our values of not wanting to rush this, being really thoughtful, wanting to invite somebody to our district who will stay here for the long term. And I agree with Dr. Kaufman, Addison's metaphor of a house and having the frame and painting it, that takes time. It doesn't mean you, I think our district and our students and our staff deserve, deserve for this process to be methodical, even if it doesn't look like what we thought it would when we started three months ago. That's all.
Thank you, Trustee Lugo. Anyone else? Trustee Sapata.
I just want to share that, so, as board, we're trying our best to be very transparent by engaging as often and many ways possible with the community, our staff, everyone, so that this is a collective decision that we can all journey together to make it a successful experience for all of us. And so, I'm very happy that we're moving this direction, because I have heard the fear of staff saying, oh, someone's going to come and change everything all over again, and we've got to start over again. So, you know, there's fears on so many different levels that led me to really look at how this just made sense. We need stability, we kept hearing it, stability. We need to look to the lens for the children, what's in the best interest for our students. And so, all of this is leading towards what we're doing today. And it makes me, Matias Story kind of liked me when I was running an after-school program at one of the high schools. And one of the PTA officers found out that I don't have a degree. So, even though I had 160 kids in my after-school program at the high school, she was demanding I show them a degree. How can I do that? So, they pushed me out because I didn't have that degree. It wasn't that I was doing good with the students. The students were loving coming to school, and they were able to participate in things that they loved doing, like anime art and a lot of things. So, I'm very confident that although we don't have what many people are asking an person with, he's educated. He is educated, has, the skill sets he has, you cannot buy. You know, those are the social skills, the soft skills, those skills that we need in our community and our schools. And everyone is just very happy, morale is going up, because those are things you just can't say, okay, you, we got to buy 100% of respect, Matias, you got to pay. You can't buy that. It's just a norm for him. And so, I think we're doing, we're heading in the right direction, and I just appreciate every one of you for your participation and, you know, continue to hold us accountable. We're doing our best for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Sapata. Trustee Whitely Chu.
And I'll be brief. I want to thank everyone sincerely who is engaging and continuing to engage. Even today, I met with representatives in the Austin Ed Fund, I met with the DOS CAC, I'm going to, other CACs, please continue to engage. We are listening, I am listening to you, and our staff, our community, our families are ready to get the work done. And I have, like, this is our Matias binder that shows us what initiatives are being put in place, that are long-term initiatives, that we're using to move this work forward so that we can have the most important work done for our kids. So, that's all, I'll be brief, because I'm ready to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm the only one who hasn't spoken, so I'll be very brief and just say, I'm really proud of the work that was really started under the previous board and has continued with this board, which is a focus, a really laser focus on student outcomes. The level of discussion that we've had has escalated beyond, you know, some of our wildest dreams, and I appreciate the staff for really doing the hard work to get us there. Yet, after every one of our meetings, I walk away with this sense of like, why is it that we have just one or two outliers every meeting, where we see Title I schools who are achieving excellence? It's got to be, it's got to be the rule, not the exception. And the only way that you make it a rule is, guess what? You have strong systems. And I have seen evidence of that over the last few months. The binder that my colleague, Trustee Whitely Chu, showed, I mean, y'all really should see it, we should just do a show and tell sometime, but it's literally like Gantt charts with, like, dates and things like that. And the reason I mention that, you know, milestones, resource allocation, everything you can imagine, and the reason I appreciate it so much as a trustee, it is giving us a tool that we, as trustees, can use to finally hold the administration accountable. You know, like, it's so hard to hold someone accountable if all you have are these lagging indicators of outcomes, months after, you know, tests have been taken. It's like, how do we ever know if things have been implemented along the way? And so, that's the lens that I've been looking for when thinking about what our district needs to become stable. That's what I'm talking about, is something that we can actually track and hold the accountability for progress. And also, you can have people with great systems but don't have the relationships to have buy-in and adoption, and who understand the community that they're serving. And so, that's something that we're looking for in our next permanent superintendent. It's also something that I feel like we have right now with our interim superintendent. And so, that's just to share the lens that I'm looking at this through as we approach this vote. I want to thank my colleagues for all the deliberation, including with TASB, with GR Recruiting, with our community. There's just been a lot of conversation, and I would say, however we all vote on this, I know that it's been well thought, it's been reasoned, and it is, it's a decision, it's an action. So, oh, yes, and Trustee Gonzalez, thank you. I'd like to, Trustee Gonzalez has been joining us by Zoom. I'd like to see if he would like to say anything as well.
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First, I just wanted to apologize for my absence. I have the flu, and I've been sick since Saturday, and so, I know that this is a very serious discussion, and so, I've decided to come in virtually. There's not really a whole lot else that I can add beyond what I've heard my colleagues say. I just want everyone in our community to know how seriously I have considered this action that we have before us, that I've spent hours talking to community members, even including up until this afternoon, weighing the decision that would be before us tonight, and that I do not want the community to think, as Trustee Kaufman said earlier, that this is an about-face on the commitments that we made to a transparent and community-driven search that we described throughout the election season in the fall. I'm still very much committed to that, but I am also grateful to be part of a body that is deliberative, that is reflective, and that takes in new information, and then changes our actions when necessary based on that information. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Gonzalez. And we were all with you Saturday, so I hope we don't get the flu too. All right, so, having a motion by Vice President Foster and a second by Trustee Sapata to approve Item 5.1, Consider Changes to the Interim Superintendent Agreement, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you all. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Sapata. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned at 7:55 PM. It would have been, well, April is, April, April Fools.
Yeah, if we can kind of waste some-
I'm so sorry, y'all. Seriously.
So, when you come back on, you can just say, Jake.
Got to reopen the meeting. Let me find that script. Okay, so, I'm going to need some coaching here from our board counsel on reopening.
Okay, so, what you'll do is a thing that I've never experienced before, which is say that we got ahead of ourselves on the agenda.
Okay.
That we need to-
Thank you.
-reopen our session-
Okay.
-at 7: whatever time.
Okay. Well, I think, yes. Thank you, I apologize, and I'm sorry to be the first of your many clients to make this mistake. But, so, we will, yes, we got ahead of ourselves on the agenda, my apologies. I forgot we have an executive session, so we will now reopen the open meeting and move to executive session. Can I just say that? Okay, pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, and 551.071. So, we reopened at 7:56, and we are recessing into executive session at 7:57. Does that cover it all? Okay, thank you.
So moved.
We have a motion by- Didn't have any of that recorded. My mic was off, is that okay?